Alderman Lazaro.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Catalano. Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
We have a quorum. Next, approval of the minutes of meeting January thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is report and recommendation recapture agreements. Ms. Henigan or Ms. Henigan?
The last PCTB committee, uh, doing your direction to, um, press some language to cap the interest rate on recapture agreements, uh, tying it to the prevailing prime rates with a maximum, uh, possible rate of ten percent and also including some time limitations so that these agreements will expire. Uh, we've put some language together in the memo and I suppose I'll just leave it at that and ask if there's any questions we can answer.
Does anybody have any questions? Mayor, please.
Okay, if we go back to, to this, so if the prime rate goes up, we're gonna be right back to five, six, seven percent like we're doing right now. I know we're adding the max of ten percent. I thought we were going with zero interest or one percent or just two percent simple interest. I mean, I like the thing about ten years after ten years then, you know, maybe, I don't know if we wanna keep ten years, I think maybe we'd just keep it at one percent. The, the person who did the work would be one percent. I, I know it's talk of case by case, but this almost went back to where we were originally. Is that right?
Well, they're, they're, they're really, I mean, the sunset clause that we wanna add ten years, so that's gonna limit the trajectory of any interest. I do agree personally that maybe we should change, as I thought about it when we're talking about, huh, making this tied into the, the prime rate. Maybe we should make it tied into something a, a little different. And I was thinking of how our taxes are tied into consumer price index or school boards are tied into that. Why don't we tie the recapture agreement into that? So, in no case would it ever really go over five percent. That would be a thought. Mayor, please.
So, when we go, let's say, the limit of ten years, only for those first ten years that, the interest will be added. After that, I mean, will the developer or the homeowner, depending who it is, still be able to at least recapture his initial investment if nothing else?
John, Mr. Forrest.
After the ten years, the recapture agreement expires, it's gone.
So, in other words, he can't even collect anything.
Correct.
Not even his initial investment. No, 'cause, say, I, I have a property, the guy next door to me brought in the water past me.
That's me. I'm next door to him.
It's seven years, you know, seven years later and I'm thinking, you know what, I should build, but, I mean, he's accumulated a lot of interest. Three more, yeah, I've sat on it for seven years, I might as well let it sit another three years. He might hold off, but if he knows he has to pay at least the initial investment, he'll do it right then and there, I think.
Well, and I think that that's what we were shooting for, is that the timeframe, the people that are investing the money in the infrastructure will, will come to the realization that if they make it too high, people will just outweigh them. So, again, going back to the thought process, this isn't, uh, an investment vehicle or an annuity for somebody, it's just for them to recoup their costs, really. And in the majority of the communities, there's zero percent interest. I, I personally prefer it to be zero, but some people have made good arguments for it to be some interest.
All right, well, we-
They're, they're taking the money out.
Sorry.
So, I think here if we made the interest as low as we could make it and still have the sunset, we'll achieve the objective. Mayor, please.
What if we just made it a simple, like, two percent and simple interest, not compounded? And at the end of ten years and there's no more interest added, at least, I don't know, is that getting too difficult then or ridiculous?
We can do anything you want to.
Well, this way the interest doesn't keep adding up and adding up. I mean, it could add up for fifty years before somebody does something, but at ten years it's capped and the developer knows that, you know, that's the most he's gonna get on his money anyways.
Alderman Jacob.
I, I would tend to agree with that, that maybe we should just do, like, one or two percent a year and not tie it into any number. And after ten years, um, are we still wanting to say, uh, uh, and what you were saying, it's done and over with?
Mayor, please.
Basically, whatever interest is accumulated in those ten years, let's say it's two percent and it's a hundred dollars a foot, all of a sudden with the two percent it becomes a hundred and twenty dollars a foot. Well, that would be it. After the ten years, it wouldn't keep adding or whatnot. I don't know. Because the whole goal here is not to have, uh, the annuity plans, right?
Alderman Jacob.
Uh, the sunset plan that we were talking about, that would drop the interest to, after ten years, it would just, there'd be no money back to the person, right?
Correct, there would be no money. And it would end the agreement, period. Alderman Lazaro.
Okay, but whatever was accumulated in those ten years as far as interest, after the ten years, it freezes to that number. Is that correct? Is that what we're saying?
That is not correct.
Okay. So, does, after ten years, do we continue to give him the one to two percent interest?
At, at the ten years, there's, the, the, the contract is null and void, there's no money owed, no interest, no money.
So, they lost it all.
They lost it all.
Yeah.
So, it's in their best interest. Part, part of the issue is what, what are the costs and how much are attributed to the cost of that project? So, that's one argument that we always go through or debate, you know? So, doing this causes the developer or contractor to, um, limit what he's gonna throw in there. If he's got a chance of losing everything, you don't wanna get too greedy by throwing in, trying to throw in another hundred thousand in legal fees or easements or other, I mean, it's specifically mentioned for the piping in the utility, not to try to offload part of your development costs on that utility also. So, this would work in an effort to stop them from, from doing that if, 'cause if they make it too high, nobody's gonna add on, you're gonna stifle development, people will outweigh you, as the mayor pointed out. Whereas if the costs are fair and normal, and that's what you would incur anyway if you had to bring the pipe in, you're more likely to pay it and move forward.
Yeah, one to two percent sounds-
Mayor, please.
Okay, yeah, the one, two percent, but at ten years, we have one, we can say that they get nothing. Two, they can say that they only get their original investment if it was a hundred dollars a square. Because depending how big, if somebody starts to accumulate some parcels or something and wants to do something, I mean, I know we pretty much, but we have a lot of areas in the unincorporated where the wells may be failing or something, you know, we've got, what is it? I'm, the number I knew a couple of years ago, how many homes are unincorporated behind the Park District all the way to eighty-three? I mean, talking, I think it was a couple of hundred homes or-
Yeah, it's a few hundred.
So, all of a sudden, you know, some people may wait ten years, the guy who brought the water because his well failed, now basically gets nothing. At least, if anything, he could at least recoup his initial investment. You know, it might be a thousand dollars a house that he has to recoup, but he's not getting any interest, he's not making money. I just don't wanna penalize the guy, he's, he's stuck, his, his wells, 'cause, I don't know, John, I keep hearing that some of those wells are, might be failing back there and some people may be coming forward.
Mr. Forrest.
I haven't really heard anything along those lines, but keep in mind that for somebody to annex and hook up to, to the city utilities, they would pretty much have to be contiguous or sign a pre-annexation agreement. I don't believe we have any water and sewer in that, in unincorporated area, so you're looking at a substantial cost for the city to install those lines, not a developer who's gonna develop two or three lots, bringing it in. Uh, I mean, as long as we've kinda thrown this back out on the table for discussion, one thing that we kinda talked about at the staff level would be to have the recapture agreement, zero interest, and at the time somebody wanted to hook up, they could, we could have some sort of a formula to determine what the costs are today for them to hook up, be it an average of three estimates or something, and that would be the recapture amount paid back to the original developer. So, now, there's, if you put the lines in and it costs you ten thousand dollars to run them past my property and in five years I wanna tie in and it's gonna cost me twelve thousand dollars, it would cost me twelve thousand dollars to do that, that's what your recapture is, that's what I would pay you. And we could just have an open-ended with no, uh, you know, termination date. So, at least at that point, the original developer that installed these utilities and we could have it, in no case would it be less than what the actual hard costs were for the original developer. That way he'd be sure to get his money back, it wouldn't be an annuity, but it would also keep the costs somewhat under control for anybody that would wanna develop in the future because they would have to, if they had to run the lines in themselves, they're gonna have to pay a contractor X dollars at that future date, whatever it is. So, send that back to the original developer.
You have a question? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
First off, Mayor, what you're talking about, I don't even know if those are our water mains up there. I don't know. Foster Avenue, that might be the page county, so they would have to approach county to tie in their, their water main. So, we wouldn't have a say-so in that. Same thing with Milwaukee Manor where you're talking, that's all county water mains. So, our hands would be out of that.
Mayor, please.
Right, but what if at some point they wanna annex in? I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen in ten, fifteen years. We're just trying to simplify this for the future.
Let's go back to the recapture agreements, I have heard several numbers thrown out here right now. And my question is, I, in your memo, I didn't see a response from Downers Grove, which we asked you to call Downers Grove, and what was their recapture agreement with Downers Grove? I believe someone asked to call another town, see what that was. Tell me that one.
Ms. Henigan.
Uh, Downers Grove caps the, their code is written so that recapture agreements may or may not have an interest of up to three percent. So, anytime someone comes forward asking for a recapture agreement, their council can, has the flexibility of anything between zero and three percent.
So, let's go back to there, why would we not run it off of Downers Grove, if we live on a case-to-case basis? Why would we have to start to, I'll put this in play that this is a guide, it's more akin to be a case-to-case basis on the recapture agreement like Downers Grove would. I mean, I, I, I don't like recapping, period.
Well, they're kind of a, a necessary evil, if you will. And, and people who put up the money are entitled to at least a shot at recouping their money. That being said, we can't let them go on for twenty-five years, thirty years. So, that's where the, the sunset clause came in. And, and why, I guess when I look at Downers, they've got a pretty good ordinance, but why do I wanna debate it every time it comes up? I mean, I'd rather have it at one percent or two percent. The development department then can specifically tell the developer or contractor, this is what the rules are. You don't have to go to any meetings, this is what your costs are gonna be, make it easier for them to apply and, and calculate what their costs are. And they also know the sundown date, so they're not gonna try any games of inflating the cost to try to offload costs onto that 'cause they know that's not gonna work in their benefit. And they'll just wind up losing everything 'cause everybody will outweigh you. But if people, if they do a nice development, that would foster other people coming in to develop the property, so that would make people wanna come in. And if the costs are the same as if you did it yourself, the, the, you know, the likelihood of it, people tapping on are much greater than they are now with some of our older recapture agreements. So, to, in an effort to move this along, I would be willing to, I, I think the general consensus, change the interest from the six percent to a maximum of ten percent, to change that to just two percent, flat. Keep the ten, ten-year sundown and the, I don't even know if the thirty-three percent maximum would come into play at two percent, but we could leave that in there. Alderman Jacob.
Um, I, I would agree with that. As, as far as number three here, Jennifer, Jen, what other rights fees, it basically says maintain all other rights fees and regulations, so what other fees are gonna stay with it?
Ms. Henigan.
Uh, the only other fee is the city's administrative fee, that's, uh, codified in, in the ordinance. The other rights are specifications on how the agreements are structured, the, the formula that's used to determine how it's applied to the different benefited properties.
Alderman Jacob.
And by changing one and two, that wouldn't affect any of those things that you just said?
Ms. Henigan.
Uh, correct, we would just be changing those specific sections of the, of the code.
Mayor, please.
So, okay, we have a, so the interest stops after ten years? Let's say it's ten, it was five thousand for the one house, the interest was five thousand five hundred. After ten years, the, whoever put the water line in gets zero or it gets the five thousand five hundred?
Gets zero. Okay, well, I'll make the motion, we'll make the motion to make the interest will be two percent simple interest, uh, with a ten-year sunset clause and the thirty per, thirty-three percent maximum, uh, increase in, in fees or, or costs, I guess that would be.
I would second the motion.
Mayor, please.
Real quick, when we talk about all this, maintain all the rights fees and regulate, is that for the developer, there's other fees that he can add on to here or, 'cause I know you mentioned it earlier, something-
Ms. Henigan.
Uh, no, there's not fees for the developer. The only other fee that's in the UDO is an administrative fee that the city gets.
That's it, just, okay, I just wanna make sure there's no other, 'cause all of a sudden, all these attorneys are gonna be adding all this other stuff.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Lazaro.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have to, Mr. Murmice? Does the mayor have to vote in this situation? Yes or no? Mr. Murmice.
I don't believe so, but the one thing we probably would wanna do is, even though it's unanimous, possibly keep it off the consent agenda. I would have to check with legal on that, though, even though it was four, zero.
But because this is an ordinance, don't we need a majority, which would be-
Yeah, but at council, not tonight.
Not five? Okay. All right. All right, well, that passes then. So, next is report and recommendation hazard mitigation grant program, purchase of two forty-two Carter. Ms. Henigan or Mr. Forrest? Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two forty-two Carter is the third and final property that is gonna be involved in the hazard mitigation grant program, partnership that the city has with FEMA. This is basically, uh, the agreement and the contract were sent to me today, so those will be in the packet for the council meeting next week, but basically it's the same sales contract, same agreement to purchase with the homeowners that we've used for the other two properties. So, I guess, yeah, we're just asking to go ahead and approve this so that the city attorney can move forward with those property owners. They have found another residence that they have a contract on, so they do need to close, I believe, the first week in March. And then we'll take possession of that, we'll have the environmental testing done prior to demolition, see if the fire department and police departments wanna use the house for training, and then it will be demoed. I don't know if any of you have been out, uh, in the neighborhood, you may have driven by, uh, two hundred Forest View, but that's, they're just finishing up the final touches of the demolition on that today, so. One fifty Addison Road is gonna be used, utilized by the fire district and then, uh, that'll be taken down probably middle of March. And, uh, this is the last one.
All right. Well, then I'll make a motion to approve the purchase. Questions?
Yeah, one question.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, are they looking for closing the first week of March?
Correct. I think some, around the eighth or the tenth, something like that.
And, and all the paperwork will be in our packet and what actual our cost is?
Well, what'll be in the packet is the copy of the sales agreement with the purchasers that'll state the sale price. This memo does include a couple of the other costs that are in there. I don't include the environmental testing because that changes from property to property depending on what they find and depending on what the remediation costs are. But we are eligible to get seventy-five percent of those costs back from FEMA once we submit the final tally to them.
First by memory, we have to have it down in how many, how many days?
Ninety days from when we take possession.
I just have one question since you brought up costs. Uh, in there, I believe, when I asked a question on, on the last house, I don't know that I got the answer, but we're allowed to include staff time, obvi, obviously legal expenses and costs, I didn't see any of those. Are we putting those in or, or is that one of those cases where it's cost us more to get the money than is worth?
No, those will be included in the tally that goes to FEMA.
Okay. Very good. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
How quick are we gonna get the turnaround with FEMA money? I, I'm just asking if the city's putting out all this money, how, I mean, if they're forcing us to have these down in ninety days, how quick are we gonna get the money we put in our, our funds?
Mr. Forrest.
Uh, I, right now, I would just be guessing, I'll see if I can get some kind of an answer for next week's meeting.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next items to be considered at future meetings is the Front Street facade program for February twenty-seventh and citation policies to be determined. I'll make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, public health and safety. Alderman Jacob, you'll take this one.
I'd like to call the order of the Public Health Safety Judiciary Committee. Let the minute taker note that the same people are here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from November fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Uh, ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? That passes. The next thing, uh, report and recommendation on the open alcohol ordinance, I'd like to have Chief Vesta talk about this.
Thanks.
Mr. Wesley.
I mean, are we gonna go through the presentation or, I, I don't wanna waste this time if we're gonna table the science.
Alderman Woods.
I was gonna make a motion to, to table this. I had some conversation with the chief and, uh, at, at this time, especially given that only half of us are here, I would make a motion to table it.
I'll second it.
Sorry, Chief, but-
That passes. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Opposed?
Opposed. Items to be considered at future meetings, there are none at this time, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ayes?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order, roll call, taker, note that the same people are here. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on January thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, that is my motion. Do I have, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, pay request partial number two, Williams Brothers Construction Inc. for the NWWTP upgrades Phase One B project in the not to exceed amount of nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and five cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Have a report and recommendation, pay request partial number eight, for Schroder Asphalt Services, Inc. for the Royal Oak subdivision improvement project in the not to exceed amount of three hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. That is my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report and recommendation, vehicle replacement number two thirty-three for a two-point-five ton dump truck in the not to exceed amount of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That is my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Questions? Go ahead.
We can't let Matt get away with that.
Okay. Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
The, the truck that we're replacing is thirteen years old, it's got twelve, twenty-one thousand miles on it. So, I'm just looking at, I know how much use construction companies get out of equipment, is this an early retire, retirement? And in the future, can we look at things we could do to, uh, keep these in, in force for a longer period of time or does that not make sense at all?
Go ahead, Matt.
Is this an early retirement? Not necessarily for the work that this vehicle's been doing. The nature of public sector, um, vehicle usage is, you basically base your fleet around your major, um, functions of each season. This is one of our six main plow trucks. So, having a truck, so basically we have to start with how many plow, how many large plow trucks we need when we need six of them to, to do what we need to do here in town. This truck only has twenty-one thousand miles on it, yeah, that's not a lot of miles for a vehicle like this, but those vehicles don't, um, get much use outside of the plowing season because even if we would use a vehicle for asphalt or hauling gravel or moving material around in the summertime, we don't do that all that often and now you have six of them to do that job. So, um, in the future, can we look at things to extend the, the vehicle life? Past the thirteen years, we can, we can look into doing other things. But the nature of how these trucks are utilized, utilizing the salt, um, the ability not to travel, have them travel long periods of time at, at any one given time. If a truck goes out for a salt run and drives twelve miles and is then done for a week, then it might sit for another week before it's operating again. So, um, we can look at modifying the way that we utilize our trucks and to gain more usage out of them in the future.
Matt, my understanding is that the new, um, trucks have a stainless steel body and that it's a lot easier now on them because of the salt. Is that what we're, we're getting is a stainless steel body?
It would have a stainless steel dump truck body. Yeah, the cabin chassis will not be stainless steel, just the body, the back end.
The dump.
The dump body.
Okay.
Which is also good for us because those bodies will, or those dump bodies will last longer, so even if we do have to replace the cabin chassis because they've rusted out or whatever after twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years, we should be able just to pick that dump body off as long as everything matches up and we can get a new cabin chassis. And if you notice from their, from the documents, and their cabin chassis costs you about sixty-six thousand dollars versus a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, any other questions? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I mean, and that was kinda my concern to look at this. I mean, I just did some quick numbers at a hundred and thirty-nine, six eighty-nine, divided by thirteen years, that's, truck cost us ten thousand, seven forty-five a year. In your numbers, we spent thirty-five thousand over time to keep the truck going and, and maintenance costs, which is twenty-seven hundred a year, so that's kinda where my question was. So, if we spent twenty-seven hundred dollars more for the next two years, would that truck work and suffice and be saving us eight, nine thousand a year?
Yeah, the recommend-
Or again, does that not make sense?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, it does make sense, but the recommendation from our vehicle maintenance, uh, crew leader, is- Yeah, it does make sense, but the recommendation from our vehicle maintenance crew leader is that this truck has now been a nickel and diming us. Not that it's twenty-seven hundred dollars a year, but in the last three years, we've spent over nine thousand dollars. So I mean, that would jump that up a little bit more to three thousand dollars a year versus twenty-seven hundred, which doesn't seem like a lot. But every year that we keep pushing this thing out there, we're going to continue to, to have added increases. So do we spend another, you know, six, seven thousand dollars to keep it going for another two years or do we put that money into the purchase of the new vehicle and try to make that thing last fifteen, seventeen years? And try to get that extra two years that we're trying to save on this one on the back end of the newer one.
Alderman Wesley?
Matt, pack me up. Is that the one that we just replaced the radiator?
It is.
The one that blew the radiator?
Yes, it is.
That cost us a couple of grand, I'm sure, so.
Alderman Jacobs?
Besides the cost of maintaining the vehicle, what kind of condition is the vehicle in? Is it rusted out? Is it a good condition, bad condition?
It's not in pristine condition. It, it could probably go another year or so. But the abilities of the new vehicle to do some of the pre-wetting things that we are looking into, the capacity of the new vehicle will allow us to do that versus the capacity of the current vehicle. So the, kind of the setup of it will help us in the future more than the current vehicle that we have.
Go ahead.
Is there anything we could salvage from the truck, like the plow or anything or everything's pretty much?
We could see what we can salvage. Usually, I mean, with the new vehicle, you're, you're going to want to buy a new plow just because thirteen years of a plow, you know, it, it's got its, it's got its bumps and it needs, it needs to be replaced. Especially in, in your salvage value of selling the vehicle on the open market, you're going to get more money because of that plow, because someone's going to want to buy it for the purpose of having it, to have that plow versus not having a plow.
Mayor, please.
Matt, you just said the cab chassis is about seventy thousand roughly, and the stainless steel box then, the dump, is the other seventy thousand. So what if we bought the same box or dump that we had? How much cheaper is that versus the stainless steel one? Because I'm just curious now.
Well, I don't have the exact prices of what a non-stainless steel box is. It'd probably be about twenty, between probably fifteen to twenty thousand dollars cheaper. But the, once again, it's the longevity of it. The stainless steel box won't rust on us like all the ones that we currently have do.
Okay, and that's where I was getting at because you said, well, it should fit on the next truck.
It all depends on-
You know, I'm kind of nervous that we're going to spend an extra twenty grand and it should fit. Then if it doesn't fit, I mean, I would imagine it should, but I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we, obviously, we're looking fifteen to seventeen years down the road. I can't tell you that International's going to have the exact same body constructions. They're going to have this exact same point, you know. Can things be modified? Things can be modified to make it fit. But I, I, I can't sit here and say a hundred percent sure that in, in fifteen years or seventeen years, even if these types of trucks are still available seventeen years from now. You know, we don't know that. You know, we may be on some totally different system, using some totally different type of equipment as well. So, but the, for the benefit of our, of the municipality, having a stainless steel body that doesn't rust will allow us to make sure it lasts that fifteen years without having to take it out to have, have it painted, sandblasted. The rust removed at six years, at five years, at eight years, whenever that needs to happen.
Okay, thanks. Back to the math equations and, and the savings. Part of the reason I'm bringing it up, I mean, I, I, I am part agree with you, but I, I want to focus on the, the maintenance of the fleet and that we're more proactive in, in cleaning them up and doing the little things and not waiting for the big thing to happen and then letting it happen. I, I know in a commercial application, people that take care of their trucks, these things last longer. Now, I know the city, you know, there's heavy workloads at time and, and they can be abused, but I think that is, we look at our mechanics and our, our service records. I mean, we really need to be on top of those to, to squeeze the other couple of years out of them, you know. Then, then it does make sense. If we're not, then it makes only more sense to me to spend seven thousand than ten thousand a year because I'm still saving three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And I think when we had this similar discussion a month and a half ago regarding the backhoe, I think we made the, made the, the statement that we are going to do things differently in the garage. We have already started seeing that happen, having the guys have more pride in the, their vehicles, cleaning them after snow events, trying to get the salt off them as quickly as possible. So we don't have the, the rusting nature. Now, with that being said, this truck is thirteen years old and it's had twelve and a half years of maybe not at that level of service done to it. So we are working with the individual drivers to make sure that they do take pride in their equipment and we don't have the issues that we're having right now. And also working with the, with our fleet maintenance staff to make sure that things are fixed promptly and efficiently so that we can make sure that we're not waiting until something blows up.
Thank you.
Alderman Jacobs?
Matt, going to what the mayor was saying, if the truck we had now had a stainless steel dump part of it, I mean, would we be here today? I mean, or would we be in the same boat or no?
I, I can't answer that question because I don't know how the, that vehicle will have, have performed over that, the course of those years and, and what, what would have happened to that. I mean, if it had a stainless steel dump, that's part of the, that's part of the whole equation. Okay, that's part of the, the entire package. It's a cabin chassis plus a stainless steel body. So just having a stainless steel body doesn't, isn't the solver of all the equation. It's just, it's part of it. And in the future, having a stainless steel body will reduce the amount of rust that we have and reduce the wear and tear on it because it, it won't have that, that portion of it. If we can take half of the, half of the rust factor out of the equation, that's, makes that truck better, a better truck.
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
If, if we did, if, say we did not go with the stainless steel and saved however much money, you, what did you say, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand possibly?
That's an estimate, yes.
And if we take care of it, I mean, could we make that last for fifteen years or do we really need the stainless steel?
No, I mean, you're still going to have with, with, it's a salt, it's basically a salt truck. So you basically put salt on it on and off for six to eight months out of the year. And salt eats away at the, eats away at the, the vehicle and causes it to rust. So stainless steel won't rust. So having a bed that does not have a stainless steel body in it, it's going to rust. That's just the nature of it. So even no matter what we do, maintenance-wise, that vehicle, that, that body is still going to rust. So that's why, then you have to spend more money because you're sandblasting it, you're painting it to make sure that it, it doesn't deteriorate to a point that now it has a big hole in the side of it and it can't hold that salt product in the, in the, in the truck. And it won't last the fifteen years.
The, the truck that we have currently, have we ever done that, sandblasted it? Has that ever been done?
Yes, that is done. I believe it was done in two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight.
Do you have any idea what that, doing that costs?
It depends. I mean, we've done, I've done it before in other places I've worked. It's usually between like three to five thousand dollars to do that.
Jeff, did you have something? No, okay. Alderman Wesley?
I have one question. I know we talked about putting the devices on for nowhere trucks aren't going. This truck will have it installed by now? Because I thought we talked about as a council-
Yeah, did we?
-new vehicles that they were going to be installed.
Well, with that, you would want to have the, all of the equipment the same, to all run off the same system so that we can all utilize, we can get all the ones on one tracking system. The, the information that we looked at was, it was basically a plug and play system. So we wouldn't buy it with this equipment. We would buy it when we bought all of them and, and be able to plug it, plug and play.
But will the plug, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Will the plug be installed for we could plug and play system? When we design, when we go out for bid for this, while we don't have to go out for bid to go to the company, is it stuff going to be there that we could connect this device to the truck?
Yeah.
We talked about it at council and we were going to do that with new vehicles.
It's a wireless system, so really all you're doing is hooking it into the electronics of the, of the thing, of the, the vehicle. So will this vehicle come with the ability to do that? The answer is yes. Will it? Yeah, I mean, it's aftermarket.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Who, anyone?
Second.
Second? There was a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, intersection safety improvement phase three construction supervision contract TBD. Anything else? Go ahead, Eugene.
Can I just say this one thing that ain't on the agenda? What is the game plan or what's the game plan for the possibility of half inch of ice that's coming our way and the rain that's coming our way on the inlet that are in the sewers to open those up for the rain to drain, for the drains are open? Are we, do you have enough salt to go curb to curb if this storm hits? Are we out there removing the snow out of these drains now? Because they are, if you look at the weather forecast, we are talking rain, snow, freezing rain, rain.
Matt, do you want to answer that or are you ready for that?
We actually did meet today to discuss that. We can discuss offline after the meeting this. But just so the council is aware, the salt order that was approved at the meeting last week was received today. So we do have salt back in our, in our barn.
Okay, what, do you know how many tons we have right now?
We received ninety-two out of the hundred. Once they get over, I mean, that's a half of your truck, so we're not going to get the rest of that hundred. I mean, obviously, we only pay for what we, what we receive. We have approximately about two hundred tons, maybe just a little bit higher than that.
How many snowstorms is that usually?
Depends on, depends on how much, how much salt we put down.
Typically?
Well, over the last month, we haven't used that much. So it'd be a lot of snowstorms. But if we have the ice event and we need to go curb to curb, we'll be able to do that on several occasions.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. I mean, adjourn.
I'll call finance committee, Jordan, make the minute taker saying people are present. I need a motion to approve January thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
I'll make, make, second.
James, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I've reported a recommendation for a TIF results. I wasn't tables, but then I just sat here and decided not to table it because I, I think the only thing we're looking for is direction. Do we want to move forward with this or not? The prices came back, so unless this council's ready, if they want to table it, we could table it. All we're doing is giving them the direction.
Okay, so who's, who's handling this? The prices came back? Are you handling this? All right, Brad, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a joint venture between the Finance Department and the Community Development Department, just so everybody's clear on that. Yeah, the pricing did come back. As you saw in the packet, the low, low price came back from S.B. Friedman, who some of you may recall did the master plan along with the Lakota Group a few years ago up along the Thorndale Corridor. So it, it somewhat makes sense that they would already have a lot of the data and a lot of familiarity with that area to come in and do this analysis for us. The bids that came back, a couple important components to it that we made sure were in there. One was that they were, they were right-sized. I remember sending it did a great job of making sure that everything was right-sized, same number of meetings, same components, same timelines. The other thing was, whatever you want to call them, I call them ejection points. The, the Friedman proposal has four different components to it, and at the end of each component, there's a decision point. You know, at the end of each one, do you want to continue, yes or no? And the council would have the ability at any one of those points to say, no, you know, we don't want to move forward, we're done, and then the billing would cease as of that day. So the, the price that was in the memo is, you know, from cradle to grave, creation of the TIF. But if halfway through, something happens and then you want to pull the plug on it, it would just be for hours incurred. It wouldn't be the full price. So the first and most critical part of it is the phase one eligibility analysis to see if the area is even eligible to become a TIF district. And that price was broken out in the memo and Friedman was the low, low person on that component as well. So that would be the first thing that they would have to do. We would have to get legal and the contracts manager to look over the contract and enter into that, have them perform that work. At that time, that report and S.B. Friedman would come to the council, present the findings. If it was found to be eligible to become a TIF district, then the council at that point would have to decide whether to continue or you could stop. If it comes back and it's not eligible, then the decision's made for you. So this would be, as Alderman Wesley said, direction to get all the documents put together to begin the analysis of, of that area, which would then come back before you, when it was done, before moving on to the next section. So every time there's a decision to be made, it will come back to the council.
Frank Rizere?
I, I would like to say, as far as the recommendation, to go ahead and, and start the process. I think that it's, it's well worth, you know, our time and effort on this. And like you said, i- if the first report comes back and says it's not eligible, then at least we have the study and we, and we finished it and we can put that through us. So my recommendation would be go ahead and start it.
Is that your motion, Frank?
Do you, do we need a motion on that? I thought it was a recommendation. Then I'll make a motion to recommend the TIF reports.
Not to exceed nineteen thousand, Einhardt?
Right.
Second.
Okay, I, I have.
Mr. Jacob?
Brad, as far as the boundaries here, who, who actually set up the boundaries? Was that you or?
Oh, go ahead. Sure, the initial boundaries and I'm not sure if it came, it should have been pretty clear in there. There was two different colors on there. Okay, it's black and white. The initial boundary area was pretty much Wooddale and Thorndale was the western and northern boundary. When we got into it a little bit further, that north side of Thorndale got picked up where the gas station, the two gas stations are in the buildings just north of those, got picked up due to the, the potential impact of the, the tollway on those properties. And then east of Wooddale Road, those properties have frontage to, to Wooddale Road. And we thought it made a lot of sense if the east side of the road would be, you know, I'd say refurbished, but would have worked on, would have newer buildings, facade improvements, whatever. It would make sense to do the other side of the road since that's going to be a corridor for everybody to go through, that both sides of the road should look nice instead of just one side of the road.
Mr. Jacob?
On that, what you were talking about here, wouldn't we, seeing that it does say here that it's easier to reduce the boundaries and increase them, would we want to maybe push it a little further west? Because I mean, all those businesses there, you know, they may have some impact and we could always reduce it. Wouldn't it make sense to even push it a little further or no?
You know, you know, perhaps Ms. Henning might have a more- fluent answer than I would, but the properties that are further west of those don't have any frontage to Wooddale Road, they all have their entrances on AEC, Hanson, Jerry, Middle, stuff like that, so they all face west away from that corridor area, I hope the manager.
What?
I could be mistaken, but I, I don't think I am. The further west you go, the less likely that the properties will have some of the characteristics to meet the requirements to establish a TIF, because the buildings by their nature are newer, and there's, I think, what, twenty characteristics, or something like that. So the further west you move, if you add properties, that's all great, but there's a strong chance they probably won't meet the criteria.
No, I was just gonna make that same comment, from what I remember before, that industrial park section was much newer, and probably wouldn't make the criteria for the the TIF, where the other side is the older and outdated industrial site.
I have a, I have a question, knowing that we're going forward with this, that's the sense as I'm getting here tonight. Before, I really would like to hear before we, I have no problem proving this, but the next phase, I think we, if it does qualify, I think we really need to concentrate, and there's been some feedback, but, well, not from I, that I have heard with other taxing bodies, that they want to know how this is going to impact their, their revenue here, so, or, or their, their coming. And I think it's only fair that the city does do an outreach to the taxing bodies, the school district, park district, the library, and the fire district, and see what they actually could lose on this. And, and if I'm mistaken, the attorney said there's a way that we could get around some of that, so Jeff, do you care coming on that?
Yeah, a couple things, one, as we started talking about this, you know, many months ago, and as we've gotten closer, and you know, gone step by step here, I meet on a monthly basis with the executive directors of the other taxing bodies, and I briefly touched that the city's looking at this down the road, and, you know, assured them that they'd be involved in the process, and we'd give them the updates, and actually, as part of the criteria to get this done, they're gonna have to be involved in the process, so it's not like we can cut them out of the loop totally, nor would we want to. So that's a hundred percent right, I mean, definitely have them involved.
I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page, yes.
Yeah, I think all those library, fire department, park district, they're all inside this TIF area, their building, so if for some reason they need a new roofs or something, that's deals, you know, could be worked on the TIF.
That's where I'm coming from.
That's, that's why, I believe that's why it was added in, am I right?
Go ahead.
The only comment I'd like to make is that, you know, obviously due to geographic restrictions, the only one that isn't in the proposed area is Fenton. Yes, the fire district, park district, library, and school district seven are in the proposed boundaries as of now.
Right, but again, it's something that we need to look at, is the council will work together with all taxing bodies, and I just don't want to jeopardize other taxing bodies. So there was a motion, there was a second, all in favor, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No oppose, motion carries. Item considered feature meeting, the FY two thousand fifteen budget. Brad did inform me for your Valentine's gift that you will receive your budget tomorrow. I told him, make sure he throws a candy bar in there for you. Any other items? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.